Are you guys ready? Let's go ahead and call the meeting of the Northern Nevada Water Planning Commission for May 4, 2022 to order. Please have a roll call.
Danielle Henderson. Michael Widmer. Bill Houck. Michael Drinkwater. John Enlow. John Flansberg. Mickey Hazelwood. John Martini. Chris Milton. Dave Solero.
Here.
Mervyn Wright. John Zimmerman. We have a quorum.
All right, very good. How about a public comment?
I have none.
Thank you. Move on to item number three, approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. Item number four is approval of the minutes from the April 6, 2022, an N W P C meeting. Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passage unanimously. With that, we will move on to item number five as a report on National Science Foundation project at U N R. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you Chairman Solero. It's good to see everybody today. So, item five, the commission asked me to bring this back to the commission. It's the U N R project that had an April press release that caught our attention. And I have coordinated with Dr. Nolan at U N R through email primarily, and she has agreed to tentatively give a presentation at our June meeting next month. So, we'll be able to hear from them a little bit more on the project. I did include in the board packet both the press release and the project abstract that U N R had put out so that you can get a better idea of what the project is. Some highlights that I just wanted to bring up today were that the award is 149,000, approximately 150,000, with a goal to apply for an additional 15 million. And what I could glean from the abstract and the press release, it's not, the project is not intended to make policy. It seems to have an academic program focus. And they're creating a stakeholder group that they're calling the Nevada Water Stakeholder Group that'll have some key players that will come from the private sector, the tribal community, research and academia, nonprofit and educational water resource partners. It looks like they're focused on climate change and population growth. Specifically, they called out declining snowpack, extreme weather, rapid population growth, and increasing urban and rural tensions around water sustainability. So, it looks like they're going to look at climate change and population. They're planning to hold a two-day conference where they're going to bring together this nascent network of stakeholders to really nail down what the statewide water issues are so that they can formulate their framework. So, that's pretty much what I got from the abstract and the press release, and I'm looking forward to hearing from Dr. Nolan next month. And with that, I'll hand it back over to the commission.
All right, great. Are there any questions, comments related to that little report? Sounds good. Look forward to something in June. So, appreciate that. All right, let's move on to item number six, report and discussion on water supply update. So, Commissioner Houck, we'll turn it over to you.
I have a very brief water supply update for you. So, key takeaways for this season, we came into this year with snowpack in excess of 225% of normal. The next three months were extremely dry. In fact, they ended up being the driest three-month period on record since those snowtail sites were installed in the 1980s. The official N R C S April 1 snowpack measurement for the Truckee Basin ended up being 60% of normal. Truckee Basin snowpack right now is 71% of normal, and this is up noticeably since the 1st of April due to the late-season winter storms we had. And this has significantly improved the river flow forecast for later this fall, and I would say the overall supply outlook for Northern Nevada. Latest model runs are showing normal Truckee River flows into at least mid-October right now, and that's beyond Toma's peak demand season. So, with that, standard water conservation protocols will be in place. This is a bar graph showing snowpack, April 1 snowpack in the Truckee Basin for the last 40 years, and you can see that this is our third dry year in a row. The black line, this is a hydrograph showing the water content in the snowpack, the daily water content. The black line is 2022, and the green line is percent of normal, or actually median. The red line above is 2017, and the orange line on the bottom is 2015. The takeaway from here is you can see that basically all the major snowstorms happened in the month of December, then we really had nothing, no real measurable, I would say, or meaningful snowstorms for a three-month period until runoff began the third week of March. And then you could see mid-April, through the third week of April, we had some pretty significant storms which really changed things. This is basically a timeline showing how the runoff forecast changed from 1st of January through April. If you look at the top row, Lake Tahoe, you could see that coming the 1st of January, we were looking at 160% of normal stream flow runoff. February, by February, it's down to basically average. By March, below average at 76% of normal. By April 1, down to 46% of average, and most recently, back up to 55. So, not quite as good a forecast as we'd like to see, but certainly better than it was just a month ago. And this is a hydrograph of Lake Tahoe elevation for the last 11 years, and you can see the ups and downs and the drought of 2012 through 2016 in there. But the light blue line is actual, and the projected dark gray line is projected. Lake Tahoe has probably risen about as high as it's going to get for the year, and it probably will be around the rim by the end of October, early November. Boca reservoir is going to fill this year, at least on paper, and some of the other reservoirs will make somewhat of a recovery. And so, that's going to help us with river flows this fall. And Toma's drought storage, what we have upstream between our privately-owned reservoirs, Donner and Independence Lakes, and what we have stored under TROA. Actually, right now, we're in better shape than we've ever been since TROA's gone into effect. As of yesterday, we had over 61,000 acre-feet of storage upstream. Capacity overall, between all the reservoirs upstream is about 32%. But what's interesting is about 18% of all the water upstream right now is managed and operated by Toma. And really interesting, and going to be a milestone for us, is by mid-July, we're going to have over 67,000 acre-feet in storage, which is almost a year's worth of surface water supply for us. And that's due, in large part, to TROA. Most of that water will be held in Stampede Reservoir, where we'll have over 41,000 acre-feet. And this year, of course, Donner Lake will fill, and Independence Lake will probably fill as well. So, it's going to put us right around 67,000 acre-feet of storage, which is nice to have. We're not going to need it this year, but it's nice to know we do have it. So, unlike last year when we were in drought operations, and we had to use water from Tahoe, Donner, and Prosser to augment normal or natural river flows to keep our surface water treatment plants online, this year will look a lot like 2020, which was pretty much a normal year for us. You know, there'll be enough surface water, Truckee River flows, to take at our treatment plants, and you know, right now, we're ramping up groundwater production. So, pretty typical season for us operationally. And so, that means, of course, we'll be able to continue to provide our customers with the same, you know, quality, high-quality supply of drinking water they've always expected from us. And our conservation initiatives this year, you know, we're going to continue to encourage responsible water use, which we always do. Our conservation policies are designed to promote water resources to sustainability and drought resiliency when necessary. To help customers exercise responsible water use, we employ a suite of demand management programs tailored around the outdoor or seasonal, outdoor watering habits of our customers. Water conservation, I would say, is an essential component of our overall water management strategy every year, regardless of the water situation. And the cornerstone, the keystone of our water conservation program is our assigned-day watering program, and where we water, auto-addresses water on Wednesday, Friday, Sunday, even addresses on Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday. And again, this year, we're just asking customers to be mindful of their watering days and the no-watering hours. Between Memorial Day and Labor Day, we ask that you do not water between noon and 6:00, and avoid watering when it's windy, and just use the water you need. And I'm going to get a plug-in for what's called our Smart About Water Day. We're having actually this Saturday, May 7, at Lazy Five. And we're inviting the public and Toma customers to come in and learn how their drinking water's made, where it comes from. You can learn about drought resiliency. We have experts going to be there, Lydia Perry is going to be there to talk about water recycling. You can learn about watershed protection, Safe Drinking Water Act, how water is treated, water quality, and basically anything else you wanted to know about your water before it gets to your tap. So, that's this Saturday from 10:00 to 2:00. And with that, we'll wrap it up. Third below-normal snowpack year in a row, but late-season storms improved the outlook noticeably. So, no drought storage will be required this year to meet demand, standard conservation protocols in place, asking customers to continue watering on their assigned days and follow no-watering hours. And I'll say that Toma has seen a substantial increase in the amount of upstream storage reserves we're able to build up and have built up to this point, thanks in large part to TROA. And that means we're in great shape as we head into the summer months, despite what is now the third year of our drought. And with that, I'll take questions.
All right, are there any questions? Wow. We're letting you off easy today. Thank you very much for that update. Appreciate that. All right, that will take us on to item number seven as a report and discussion on the update, or the draft update to Chapter 4, Wastewater and Effluent Management for the 2021-2040 Comprehensive Regional Water Management Plan. Mr. Smitherman.
Yeah, we're going to see if the mic will reach over here so I don't have to take a long walk.
Perfect.
Down there. But thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Chapter 4 is in what I believe is draft final state. It's ready to go into the hopper along with the other chapters that you've accepted in their draft form to be included in the compilation for final review. So, the changes are pretty minimal. Figure 4.1 that I've talked about before has been updated, so it's more colorful, and it shows the locations of the wastewater treatment plants, each one of the service areas for the facility itself, and then where the jurisdictional boundaries are, Reno, Sparks, Washoe County, within those sewer sheds, if you want to call it that. So, I think it's a little bit more informative figure than we had before. And Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Agency was kind enough to produce that for us. Section 4.2 has been changed only with minor revisions for technical correctness for some of the units of measure on some of the water quality parameters. So, the people who work directly and in detail with the water reclamation facilities will recognize the changes there, and honestly, they probably would have been lost on me. I'm trusting the reviewers and the commenters. Section 4.3 has been revised to include the missing descriptions of three projects/programs, water, regional effluent management guidance document that is still being developed and will eventually be adopted into the plan as an amendment in six months' time or so. The second is the One Water Nevada Advanced Purified Water Program at American Flat. And the third is a brief description of the project to supply Toma free-claimed water to the Tahoe-Reno Industrial G I D. And then finally, section 4.4 on septic systems. That one, after some discussion with among staff, realized that there was a lot more text in that one, and it was a little bit text-heavy compared to, you know, in relation to the rest of the sections, and a lot of the information was kind of historical. So, we decided to trim that one down just to the pertinent information for, you know, looking forward for the next five years and what can be used for effective planning. And that's it. So, what you have in your packet is a clean copy of the chapter. If you want to see the redline version, I can provide it to you. But as most redline versions at this point in time, it's pretty messy. But I'll send it to you if you want to look at it. Otherwise, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman, for questions or comments.
All right, thanks, Mr. Smitherman. Are there any questions? Looks like Mervyn Wright, Commissioner Wright's got a question.
Yeah. Yeah, you're coming through loud and clear.
The chapter references illicit drainages. And so, my question is, what is an illicit drainage? Because it says it includes irrigation discharges, or discharges, illicit discharges. That's right, excuse me. So, I was just, my question is, what is an illicit discharge, you know, when it comes to, as you said, it includes irrigation discharges?
Yeah, I'm not an expert on the environmental control and pretreatment programs, but I believe it's more in the realm of stormwater where there would be a discharge that shouldn't be happening, not permitted, not recognized under any general permit. Kim, do you have more knowledge of that particular terminology?
I think you covered it. It's basically a not permitted, not recognized discharge that is not legal.
I know that it's an element in the stormwater plan to seek out and eliminate.
Yeah, it can be a spill. It could be something that you're not accounting for through a regulatory framework.
Thanks.
And then the second thing is regarding Palomino Farms on 4-15. I think on behalf of, oh, and by the way, for all of your information, you probably see that I got a different, I'm sitting in a different office now. I always started a new job here with the Pyramid Lake Fisheries. I'm the executive director for the Pyramid Lake Fisheries Department now for the tribe. And so, when it comes to, you know, development out there in Palomino Valley, Winnebago Valley, you know, we're certainly interested in the Mullins Drain, the drainage area. So, when it comes to the Palomino Farms, as it's contained in this chapter, you know, we're certainly interested with the planning and the scoping, you know, and with how, you know, the effluent is going to be utilized out there for the Palomino Farms, just because of the drainage factor. And so, I just wanted to make that comment, Jim.
Okay, thank you. Well, first of all, congratulations on your new job. I hope that goes very well for you. And then, second of all, we'll continue to bring reports, or the proponents of the project will continue to bring reports, I'm sure, as that project develops, and I'm sure we can keep you in the loop.
Any other questions or comments from members of the board? All right, not seeing any. This is not an action item, so I'm guessing this will come back next month, Kim. Is that correct? Okay, very good. All right, thanks. With that, we'll move on to item number eight, which is action discussion and possible direction to staff on the draft update to Chapter 6. So, Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you Chairman. Kim Rigdon, Water Resources Program Manager for the record. So, Chapter 6 is our flood management and stormwater drainage chapter. This is, again, a draft final that's already been accepted by the commission, but we continue to get some comments in, and we wanted to make sure to address those comments. So, what you're seeing is some minor, not substantial, comments that were, or modifications that were addressed after we got some additional review from agency staff. The primary modifications include City of Reno updates to their Title 18 zoning code that changes the critical zone-one requirements, and updated drainage code references that is out, those are outlined in Table 6-3, and I believe that's page 622 and 623, if you want to go to those pages. Section 6.8.3 includes the City of Reno retention policy for the Swan Lake, Silver Lake, and White Lake basins, and that's on page 6-28. So, with that, staff is seeking acceptance of draft Chapter 6 with or without changes, and I'll turn it back over to Chairman Solero and the commission for questions and discussion.
All right, are there any questions, comments, or direction on this chapter? Not seeing any. This is scheduled as an action item, so do we have any public comment on this item?
I have Michael DiMartini.
All right, let's go ahead and have Mr. DiMartini come up.
Is this working? Chairman, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item, Michael J. DiMartini. I haven't got a chance to review the latest detention stuff that's been added to the chapter, but that's just due to lack of time. I will go look at that, but I have heard from some people that are out in Cold Springs that the city is requiring an increase of like 30% detention for building of projects. As everybody knows, I have submitted plans for the reservoir in Cold Springs, as well as some stuff in other valleys, and there are permits that are already approved and some that are pending at the Division of Water Resources. My understanding that this reservoir in Cold Springs is included as part of the plan because it has been submitted to both this commission, it is in the files, and as well as the Regional Water Planning Commission. The thing that's at issue here is that the 30 developers are suggesting that they must acquire the 30% water right in order to satisfy the city ordinance. So, the 30% is an issue. I'm just bringing to the attention that that requires somebody to purchase something that they need to have in order to develop. The other thing is, is of course, the regional project that's necessary to alleviate the flood situation, some of these valleys, is still out there. And so, we're still willing to work with all the agencies, including the City of Reno, to develop those facilities. And the utility, the flood utility, may be a vital component to that. I don't know what the current status is of the flood utility, but obviously, funding is necessary, and we recognize that. Thank you very much.
All right, is there any other public comment?
I have none.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wright, you've got your hand up.
Yeah. Maybe this question's for Kim. I understand that there's some movement and work being done in the Vista location, the Vista Narrows, as it's called, or the Vista Reef, some termed it, but there has been interest with respect to opening that wider, making that a wider outlet from Truckee Meadows. So, I was just wondering if there was any discussion or possible discussion regarding the Vista Narrows, Vista Reef's issue with respect to the flood, the Chapter 6 flooding?
Can you hear me? Sorry, thank you. I do not believe that there is discussion in the chapter on that particular project. So, I can, if you would like to, I can meet with you and talk a little bit more with Danielle. Maybe Danielle Henderson knows a little bit more about that particular project with respect to the flood management chapter and the issues that are discussed.
I can comment on that if you'd like me to, really briefly.
Please do.
Well, thanks for your comments. I don't think that there's a detailed discussion about the Vista Narrows project in this chapter. If it's something that needs to be added, I could certainly work with Kim on that. You know, you are aware that it's an element of our overall proposed flood project plan, and we're trying to move forward with that in the next year or so. So, we are in detailed design and trying to work through the permitting process with the regulatory agencies. I guess it just depends on what level of detail needs to be included in the chapter. We have lots of information that's available, and it is something that we're working on right now, but it is part of our overall flood project. So, if that's incorporated in the chapter to everyone's satisfaction, then, you know, we can always meet with you separately and provide extra information. We've got fact sheets, we have presentations, and in fact, we gave all of our modeling information to the Pyramid Lake Pai tribe recently for some additional review as part of our agency coordination. Right now, it's kind of outside of the permitting process, but we, you know, we've got members on our technical advisory committee. So, with that, I mean, I'm happy to work with you, Mervyn and Kim, if we need to add some detail to this.
I don't know if it necessarily has to be included, but because we're talking about this chapter as part of the regional plan, what that project impact would be on planning efforts, you know, behalf of the commission, or what purpose this plan is going to serve, Vista Narrows project, you know, may have influence one way or the other with regard to, you know, what our responsibility is here as a planning commissioner.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, any other questions, comments, concerns, direction, discussion, possible motion, take anything? Commissioner Zimmerman? Got a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, that takes us to item number nine, action discussion and possible direction staff on chapter update, let's see, draft update, Chapter 9. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you Chairman Solero, Kim Rigdon for the record. So, this is another draft final that the commission has seen a couple times before. The last one was submitted in March this last year, and Catherine Hansford had made some edits and modifications, but still needed to include some updated capital improvement and budget and fee information from some of the agencies. So, that information has been included, and the updates that were made are for water and sewer connection fees, water and sewer rates, the Toma costs reflect the five-year outlook, Toma longer-term cost estimates based on the completion of their facility plan, and the City of Reno five-year outlook. And with those changes, the total cost increased from 840 million over the next five years to 1 billion. So, and with that, staff is seeking to accept draft Chapter 9 with or without changes, and I will turn it back over to the commission for discussion and questions.
All right, thank you. Are there any discussion questions from the members of the board? How about public comment? Do we have public comment on this item?
Michael DiMartini.
Michael DiMartini, just a short comment. It's glad that money's planned to be spent, and there are a lot of needs for it. And I think there's a lot of flexibility in the plan, just exactly how it's spent, so I would support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments, questions from the board? Thank you. All right, any other comments, questions from the board? Since this is an action item, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. Thank you. Moves on to item number 10, report and discussion on the draft update to Chapter 10, issues and action plan. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero, Kim Rigdon for the record. So draft Chapter 10, issues and action plan is complete. The last time I brought it to the board last month, there were a few developing sections that I was still working with the agencies on updating those particular portions of the plan. So I, rather than go through all the sections like I did last time, I just like to go through the updates to those particular developing sections. And I did update the staff report. I know the last staff report, I didn't have the correct section numbers because I made some last-minute edits. So this staff report has the correct section numbers on it with the headings. So essentially, the effluent management alternatives were included in all the different geographic planning areas under that chapter. Sections 10.1 to 10.8, I don't know if you noticed, but I combined the water, wastewater, effluent management all together under, you know, those particular geographic areas so that it was easier to see the one-water picture that we're shooting for in our, you know, regional water planning. Section 10.13, septic systems and water quality was significantly pared down. As Jim stated in Chapter Four, we translated that over to Chapter 10 so that it would be pared down and really just focus on what's happened over the last five years and what'll be happening over the next five years and what the goals are. Section 10.18 is the Water Quality Protection and Remediation Section, and I did get updates from NDEP that there is a new municipal well field, six wells, to the north of the Sparks Solvent Fuel Site Tank Farm. And the, once those go online, the hydrodynamics in that area could change, and that would be, create some dialogue between NDEP and Tumworf and the remediation district. And so they've committed to continue to coordinate with all the entities that would be involved in that, should the hydrodynamics in that area change and shift. Also, NDEP is evaluating options to discontinue monitoring of groundwater in Lemon Valley due to plume stable, PCE plume stabilization in that area, and decrease concentrate, and decreasing concentration trends. And so they're going to continue to coordinate with the remediation district and the local agencies on that effort as well. And so those were the highlights of everything that was developing as of the last draft update. And I'm submitting, staff is submitting the draft for commission members to review, and we hope to receive comments by mid-May so that we can incorporate those into the final draft, get acceptance in June, and allow AE Comm to incorporate that into the final plan. And with that, Chairman, I'll turn it back over to the Commission for discussion and questions.
All right, thanks. Were there any questions, comments on Chapter 10 for staff? Not seeing any. Thank you very much. We'll get any comments, we have it back to you by mid-May. Thanks.
Thank you.
Takes us to item number 11, report and discussion on chapters and schedule related to the draft. Yes. Oh, sorry.
Nothing.
Okay, thank you. No, no problem. Thanks, appreciate that. Let's see, report and discussion on chapters and schedules related to the drafting and presentation of the 2021-2040 Regional Water Management Plan. Ms. Rigdon.
Okay, so based on the last few items and actions, we have accepted Chapters 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9, which means if we get comments back for Chapter 4 and 10 through mid-May and get those completed and accepted in June, then we should have a complete draft plan available in June. I have AE Comm working on helping us to bring all that together, do a final review, and formatting of the plan. And because Chapter 4 and 10 may go well into June, I'd like to, I incorporated an additional month, July, for that plan packaging. So it pushed the schedule out one more month. We're hoping not to need to use that. If we get all the comments in by mid-May, we should be able to have that final draft by June. But I just wanted to create a one-month additional buffer as we're scheduling for the public hearing and trying to figure out what, you know, the timeframe for public comments and the framework for that. So that's primarily the update on the Regional Water Management Plan schedule. And with that, I'll hand it back over to the Commission for comments and questions.
All right, any comments, questions for Ms. Rigdon? Not seeing any. Thank you very much. Take us on to item number 12, Program Managers' Report. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero, Kim Rigdon for the record. So there hasn't been many changes to, since we discussed this last month, to the projects and work plan. Few invoices coming in. I haven't had any updates come in on the projects, so I'm not going to focus too heavily on that piece unless there's questions from the, from the Commission on that. I did submit a financial report, and I don't know if anybody noticed, I'm just going to call myself out before anybody calls me out. But under the legal fees, we've been working on some internal, you know, really looking at it and auditing it ourselves to try to figure out why that looked funny. And it looks like our accounting system just hasn't caught up with our invoicing. And so there were some invoices that were billed to the previous fiscal year that we're going to have to square away in our accounting system and make sure that it only reflects this fiscal year. We've also reversed a few late fees from, from some of the invoices being held up in our accounting system and renegotiated some of the timeframes for getting those paid. So I just wanted to highlight that that is being fixed and should be fixed by the next meeting, and we are with, well within budget on that item. So. And that is it for the Program Managers' Report. Thank you, Chairman Solero. I'll turn it back over to the Commission.
All right, are there any questions or comments for Kim? Seeing none, thank you very much. Get back to my agenda here. That takes us to item number 13, discussion regarding location and possible agenda items for the upcoming NNWPC meetings. Ms. Rigdon.
Thank you, Chairman Solero, Kim Rigdon for the record. Our next meeting is scheduled for June 1, 2020, right here in the chambers at 1:30. We're planning on having you and I come back and do a presentation on that date. We also have invited Nick White with Tumworf to come and give us a groundwater level status report at the request of Commissioner Widmer, who wasn't able to attend today. We were going to try to do that today, but it'll probably happen at the next meeting. I'll probably have some projects and agreements that I'll need to bring forward and for recommendation to the WRWC for approval after the budget hearing. The WRWC budget hearing is scheduled for the 19th. So I'll be bringing some of those projects forward. And we have filled the Water Management Planner position, and I have invited our new staff to attend that June 1 meeting so that I can introduce her. Birgit Wittegrin is coming to us from NDEP, and she'll be joining us on June 6, so I will be introducing her at the next meeting. So that's exciting for us. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the Commission if there's anybody else who has anything else that they'd like to add to the agenda.
All right, are there any other topics that the Commission would like to see in June? Not seeing any. Going to take it easy on you today, I suppose. This is scheduled for action. Just curious, with legal counsel, do we need to call for public comment if there's really no action on this item?
They're not going to take action. You don't need to call for comment.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to item number 14, Commission comments. Are there any comments from any of the Commissioners? Commissioner Wright?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I had a chance to comment on Bill's presentation earlier regarding the water supply. You know, certainly, you know, what we're doing here at the Pyramid Lake Fisheries definitely is dependent on the decisions we're making with regard to water management, you know, especially in the upper, in the reservoirs upstream. And now I'm involved with the Truckee River Operating Agreement Memorandum of Agreement, or TROAMOAA, discussions where the tribe is the lead in managing the fish water in the reservoirs. And, but what I wanted to mention, I was on another meeting earlier with EPA headquarters out of Washington, and this PFAS issue and the other unregulated contaminants is starting to, you know, come to the forefront when it comes to water quality standards, Clean Water Act. And so I wanted to just bring it to the attention of the Commission that issues of contaminants and unregulated contaminants are likely going to be coming to the forefront. And the comment I made today was that the EPA needs to focus its attention and priority with respect to human health, the human health responsibility of the Clean Water Act, and not necessarily looking at the economic beneficiary as a priority. And so we've seen a lot of movement and a lot of talk, but we really haven't seen a lot of action. And so when it comes to PFAS and when it comes to some of the other contaminants that may not be regulated at this time, we're certainly interested in being involved and participating with the development of how those regulatory facets of the Clean Water Act are going to come into becoming a part of Clean Water Act regulation. So I just want to make that comment. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any other Commissioner comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to staff comments. Ms. Rigdon.
No staff comments at this time. Thank you.
All right, how about public comment?
Michael DiMartini.
No public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Any other public comment? Just checking. All right, thanks. And with that, we will go ahead and adjourn.